Okay, well, it's seven o'clock. So I would like to call the August 11th. The world appeals means water. My name is it seven is Sherman. Also, for the Tom Manning secretary. So we're sad with regular manner. Bill Muntzer alternate and I would ask that he was sit for Mr. Fitzgerald this evening. And Doug Smith, I'd ask you to please to sit for Floyd.
Okay.
Also present are Tom Sanrini, the Department of Southern Planner. And to be sure for the recorded secretary of representatives. Since we have one item on the adjournment tonight. At the appropriate time, the secretary will read the call. He will determine the manings that required in order. At that point, the app will handle his representative representatives. Will be given the opportunity to present their case. The end of the presentation, board members will probably have questions. We'll then ask if anybody here just be a favor or opposition to the request. They happily will be able to rebut, but they feel that an again comments I see. At the end of the public hearing, we'll probably just go to the discussion and celebrations of the case. One last thing is just if you had enjoyed myself, you just turn your cell phone to library or off would be appreciated. With that, I think we are set to proceed, Mr. Benny.
Okay, ZBA twenty one dash oh five thirty six West Main Street. Greg Thaddeus applicant Jerome Properties LLC owners coastal site plan cam review and variances of section four point two dash two A to reduce the side parentheses west yard setback from ten feet to zero feet. Reduce the side east parentheses yard setback from ten feet to zero feet. And reduce the rear yard setback from ten feet to one point four and one point five feet. PIN number two, six, one, nine, one, eight, three, one, nine, zero, eight, four, MMD zoning district. For the record, the mailings have been reviewed, they've been found to be acceptable and meet the requirements and we're set to proceed.
And also sure you don't that Floyd Kravitz, Vice Chairman has turned the.
Floyd Kravitz is on here.
Yes, we hear you. So Doug, so Doug, you can't be sitting this evening. That's Floyd is here. Okay, do we have an applicant here?
Yeah. So Peter Springsteen here. But I'm looking for Greg Thetis, who's really the lead on this. And I don't see him on your group there.
Greg is a attendee and I've asked, I promoted him to panelist, but he doesn't seem to be moving over for here he comes. Okay, he'll be joining in.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Greg Thetis with Thetis Engineering with an office at seventy Essex Street in Mystic, Connecticut. Licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. You're representing the owner Jerome Properties regarding this variance application. I'm gonna try to share my screen, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, can everyone see? See the site plan before you tonight?
Yes.
This is the give you a little, this is the building that fronts on Main Street, which is thirty six West Main, the corner of Pearl and West Main Harp and Hound is back here. And then we have an entrance to this back parking lot located on Pearl Street. We were here. I don't know, was it pre, it was pre COVID for this storage addition to the commission, if you all remember. So at that time, we had parking basically as shown. It's always been a parking lot. We worked with the fire marshal and the fire chief to kind of work through a clear access to get into the back area here, just in case there's a fire. Fully understanding that you're not going to get a ladder truck in from that side, but would have through traffic for smaller smaller emergency vehicles. So what we're proposing, this is a satellite parking area for Central Hall over at eighteen dash twenty twenty two West Main Street, which I know you're all familiar with that building. So we have, I'm just gonna show you the parking, some of the parking is for the actual property. So for Central Hall residents, there's there's fifteen spaces located back here. And then four for Tiff Building, which is this building up front. So they've been designated, I think the original approval was back in two thousand twelve. And you know, it's an open parking lot. We felt, you know, we kicked around a bunch of ideas on how to handle the parking for Central Hall, which are I guess higher end condo units in downtown Mystic. These are a bit remote from the building. We felt we needed to get some at least cover during rain and or snow. So we're proposed proposing open carports, basically. So they're not closed in. There's four located on the east side with kind of a, and I'll let Peter talk, Peter Springsteen will talk about the architecture. But there's this brick paver walk basically guides you from Central Hall to this parking area. So that brick paver walk is going to be within the parking area for three gravel street. And we have an easement for that already in place as part of the original approvals. And there'll be a little cupola and stuff and it'll say CH or Central Hall on it, kind of designating that parking for Central Hall. So what we're proposing on this side, it's four on the east side and then six on the west side. We originally had a couple more. We wanted twelve total, just because there's twelve units, twelve residential units in the in the Central Hall building. But it interfered with some of the easements that are coming through the site, specifically the sewer easement. So we removed the single carport that we had in this area, which is the southeast corner. And then we removed, we shortened up the one on the west side. So we are looking for some variances where we are kind of up tight against the property line here, we're looking for zero setback. And then on the northern property line, we're looking for one point four and one point five feet. And the zone allows property line agreements. We just felt it was easier to go kind of this route. And just to kind of go over, I'm gonna just quickly go over the hardship explanation, because this is a unique block, it's a unique use. And you know, it's consistent with other air, other parking, covered parking in the in the downtown Mystic area. And the parking is already there, so we're not gonna really prevent, we're not gonna prevent vehicles from parking there, it's just whether or not they're they're open to the elements as well as open to the neighbors to look at. We feel like putting a roof over, over at least ten of the twelve parking spaces that we would basically provide a more, and I'll let Peter talk a little bit more about this, but provide a better look to that parking area. So it is a unique lot, although it has the bulk of its frontage on West Main. There's no access there and the access is only by a kind of a one directional, actually both directions, but only one car can go through at a time off Pearl Street driveway. So it is, it is, it is very unique. The parking is already there. It's consistent with the setbacks. Within this zone and the W or the MDD now used to be the WDD. It's a kind of a narrow shape. You can see how, how, and this parking was previously approved. How tight it is, there's not really a lot of room to kind of finagle or move things around. Believe me, we tried. But also just it's unique that it doesn't have the direct access on West Main. And you know, ultimately, would would we, we didn't do it at Central Hall where we could have raised the building and parked underneath. Would have been a much more challenging project. Similarly, here, you wouldn't want to disturb that front, frontage on the historic frontage on West Main Street. So the satellite parking is is unique to the area on this kind of a corner property. But so those are the variances. We're requesting the three variances. Again, the hardship is the narrow shape, the the access on Pearl Street. But already approved parking area. And then I'll leave it to unless there's questions regarding the site plan, I'll hand it off to Peter.
Uh, any questions of Scott?
I'm also, I remember the first presentation.
Okay, Floyd?
No, I don't have any questions right now.
Okay, Tom Manning?
Yeah, I have a few questions. If the, if the board doesn't find that there is a hardship, my understanding is that the parking is existing and will remain. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And let me ask you this, are there any other covered parking in downtown Mystic that you could cite as an example of this?
I think there's, well, there's, I think, I want to say behind in the, in the bigger parking lot, I forget the name of the development there, not the Art Association, but the one next to it, I think there's some down parking there. That's under buildings. Peter might.
But I think you're thinking of the standard, is that the one you're?
Well, not the standard, but there's, there's one. The condos down there on the water.
It's a little off.
It's a little bit different, but I don't know, Peter, I know we talked about this with the Peter, was there another? I don't know, Peter's an attendee yet or not.
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here.
Okay.
I can't think of one where there's another covered carport in downtown Mystic, but I, you know, doesn't mean I'm I'm right about that.
Okay. And what was the reason that for the new building that they couldn't? Was it just that they didn't want to go to, it would have been a significant expense to raise the building up and have parking like the standard, I think is what you're saying is that.
Well, at the standard, at the standard, we're, we're a little bit below grade there, so we're really only up a half story.
Yeah.
And at Central Hall, we couldn't, we couldn't go any deeper than we are. So essentially you'd lose your retail level and you just have.
Yes.
Yeah. Which would really kill the spirit of that building, so.
And so my understanding is how many of these spaces are for the residents of Central Hall when? Would you say six or?
Twelve.
Twelve? And then what this, how many for the shop owners or in?
Leave there's four or actually you can look at the chart here on the screen, there's fifteen for Central Hall and four for the shopkeepers, sorry.
So that's almost twenty that the spaces exist, but they just, you're looking to get covered.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Bill Muntzer, any questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, Doug Smith?
I'm just, I'm trying to find the twenty spaces and I don't see them all. Are those two that you, that you're not covering, you're counting those, I guess, huh?
Yeah, so there's seven along this property line, six of them will be covered.
Okay, all right.
And then there's four here, all four will be covered, then one single one, that's, what's that, that's twelve. And then there's seven along here.
Seven?
Yeah, so there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Again, it's not, it's not an ideal layout, but we, we had to work with what we had.
Okay.
And we actually, we ended up losing one space to to help out with emergency access as well as the sewer, the sewer easement. So we did, we did concede one space, which the regs on parking changed a little bit, so the retail didn't require any. Because they all do validation. So we ended up, if you look back at the table. One of the spaces for the residential is over at the at the Mystic Museum of Art. And then we have zero validation or zero required for the commercial. But we're providing, just because we think it's the right, actually, we don't, my client, the owner, the owner of the building thinks it's they should give one space to each of the commercial uses over at the Mystic Museum of Art. So we're actually providing more actual spaces than are required by the regs in our previous approvals.
Okay, and one other question, as I look at one of your drawings labeled carport three D. It's got fencing on the back of the west side carports and then fencing on the north side. That's new fencing that you're gonna put in or is that existing?
Let me just get to that. Is this the one you're looking at?
Uh, yeah. Where it says proposed carport, there's a fence right, right above it there.
I believe that's the all new fencing.
That's, that's, is there existing fencing there or that? Proposed.
This is all new. I don't believe there's any existing.
All right, so if if this is not granted, you're gonna still have fencing there with cars backed up right up to the fencing, correct?
Yes, that that's on the property line, so.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I have a question, how many apartments are in that building?
Central Hall has twelve.
I don't know, in this just building.
Oh, that I'm not sure.
I, I'm pretty sure there's five units and there's, so there's five residential spaces required, one for each unit.
So so five, five for the apartments, four for the stores, that's tonight. Is that correct?
Let me go back to the chart here. So there's so we're providing, we're not providing, we're providing five for the residential. Four in the Tiff parking lot, which is the parking lot we're talking about. And one of them will be over at the Mystic Museum of Art, they'll actually have a yearly pass. And then fifteen of the ones we just showed you, ten cupboard will be for the Tiff building or for the Central Hall. So, so you can see right here fifteen tipped, which is this parking lot and four residential, that's the nineteen we have on site. One will be over at Mystic Museum of Art, that's twenty. And then all, though none are required for the commercial uses, we are providing four additional spaces at the Mystic Museum of Art for the you know, the owners of the businesses on, on in the front building here, thirty six West. Did I make that more confusing than?
More or less, yeah. So how many parking spaces do you have at the pump station?
We have nine, I believe.
At the pump station?
Yes.
And those are for?
Those are, yeah, so we provided two spaces for each unit at Central Hall, so that's twenty four total. And then we have another allotment. I'd have to bring up the Central Hall one, but we have another allotment of spaces for the retail at the Mystic Museum of Art. Pump station is nine plus fifteen is twenty four. Ideally, we would have one space covered for each unit, but we only can do ten here, so we're probably just gonna sell two of the units without covered spaces if we get these approved.
Okay, okay, Peter, you have something to add?
Uh, just if you wanna, Greg, scroll down to the architectural drawings.
Wanna change, go?
You know, can start with the elevations. So these carport structures, we tried to minimize them as much as possible. So they're, kept the roofs down as low as we felt we could for an SUV kind of vehicle. And they're fairly simple, we have run these by the HGC and the fencing as well, and they're, they seem to be all in favor of this design. The, the columns are pulled in from the edges so that you can make the turns into the spaces. And also, also brings those columns away from the property lines, so we have room to dig them. The foundations for those. But essentially, that's, that's it, they're fairly simple.
Okay, does anybody have any questions, Peter? No, okay. Oh, yes. Somebody has something?
This is Tom Sanrini, I have a comment on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay.
Correct. At its meeting on August tenth, twenty twenty one, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the referral listed above and made the following comments. The commission has concerns with construction on a lot line without an agreement with the adjacent property owner that would allow for construction and maintenance of the structure. They also had concerns with drainage. That's all.
Thank you, Tom. Is there anybody else who you're in, so I'd like to speak on this, Tom, Tom Sanrini?
There is no one else in attendance.
Okay.
Ed, can I ask Peter a question?
Absolutely.
Now, Peter.
Yes.
Is there, I'm assuming that there's signage that indicates that all these parking spaces, whether they're in the carport or open are exclusively for private parking, is that correct?
There will have to be signage, that piece of it, I don't think has been developed yet, other than the CH sign on the gable there. But that will be developed at some point here, yeah.
So it would, so there would be no intent to entertain, someone drives down to Mystic for the day to park their car there, in other words.
Uh, there, well, presently, there's signage there now that says, you know, if you park here, you'll be towed. So I'm sure that will be continued.
So the, the final question is, you have no plan at this point for any kind of gate access or anything like that?
That had been discussed, but I think, I think that went out the window for some reason. Greg, I don't know if you know anything about that either, but.
Uh, there was a gate approved originally, and it's carried through on all the plans, so we I'm not a hundred percent sure if they're gonna follow through with that, I think they're still trying to work out that detail. And then I.
Thank you, thank you.
And I can respond to the maintenance piece of this. The, because it's wide open underneath, we can maintain the columns, no problem. The roof and this trim can all be accessed from the roof itself and accessed on the, on our side of the, the building, so I don't see maintenance as an issue at all. We can certainly handle that without going on other property.
And then also just, we, we will be going before planning and zoning with a site plan application. So we will put together a maintenance document for them for that as well as deal with the drainage also at that time.
Uh, great, it's also requires a cam report, which I think you've included. For the record, could you read number two, number seven and number nine, everything else is, no changes?
Sorry, my reading two, seven and nine?
I guess, please.
From the dam application?
Yes.
Uh, just hold on once, I gotta.
Just for the record here, everything else is no change, with two, seven and nine.
I'm just gonna bring it up on the Okay, Greg Thetis again, Thetis Engineering. The coastal site plan narrative to description of the proposed project. Proposed carports are located above the existing parking stalls designated for the residential units at eighteen dash twenty two West Main Street. Roof runoff will be captured by a roof gutter system and it, and directed to an underground water infiltration gallery where the first inch will be captured. The existing impervious surface is five thousand sixty nine, which is thirty seven point eight percent of the site, existing site of the proposed is seventy three, thirty four, fifty four point seven percent of the site. Three through six are no changes. Explanation, number seven, explanation demonstrating how the proposed project is consistent with the applicable coastal policies. Identified above flood zone has been revised by FEMA to AE eleven and ABD eighty eight. That was a change from the previous CAM application, otherwise there's no changes. No changes on number eight. Number nine, description of the proposed measure to mitigate adverse impacts identified above on coastal resources. Let's see, the proposed additional impervious surface will be captured by a roof gutter system and directed to an underground water infiltration gallery where the first inch. and directed to an underground water infiltration gallery where the first inch will be captured. Number ten, eleven, and twelve, there are no changes.
Thank you. Okay, do you have any final comments, Greg or Peter?
No, I do not.
Okay, board members have any questions? Scott?
I thought that sounded like Doug ready to start.
Okay, Tom Manning?
Yeah, I, I have a question. This, to me, and I'd like people to address, somebody to address this. If the board decided that there was no hardship really in the scheme of things, what would that do to the parking as it has been structured and identified right now? And now, the reason I'm asking is, you know, everyone would love to have, you know, parking stalls and this type of thing. And many times, it's the frosting on the cake. Let me be blunt about it. The hardship, I'm really struggling to find out what the hardship is. And I need somebody to kind of convince me that there is a real hardship here and not something that would be a nice to have. But bluntly, it's not necessary. So if somebody could address those concerns of mine.
I'll take a crack at it. This is Greg Fetis again, Fetis Engineering. So if the parking currently exists as is, it's actually a little bit that twelve-foot emergency fire access is not currently fully there. So it's, so we compromised a little bit on our side in order to work with the fire department and the fire marshal to grant them kind of full access to get through there in an emergency. We're also working with the neighbor to the east, which is chapter one, to, to improve kind of what you see back there now, which is, is maybe a little cluttered and maybe a little disorganized. So we're proposing some improvements, some fencing improvements on their, their side. And to give them better access to some additional parking. And, and kind of, so we're working with them, we're working with three gravel street to kind of clean up this whole area back here. If if we don't, I guess if we don't, if the board does not find a hardship, the, the spaces are still gonna be there. In fact, there probably would be one additional one. And the emergency access would still have to be worked out with the fire marshal. As for the actual hardship, the, again, I think it's the uniqueness of the slot. There's any other lots shaped in this manner with access from with kind of a one-way access. Granted, it's both ways, but there's one-way access off of Pearl Street to an already approved parking lot. Building setbacks, the lines are consistent. You can see six Pearl Street is a zero lot line. Going to the north. That unit is, is right on the line. All the properties along West Main Street are basically on or close to the front property line as well as again, the forty-six West Main and two Pearl Street are right on the line as well as four Pearl Street, right on the street line. But I think it's consistent. It's, it's again, a very unique lot. And the parking is there already, I, I think.
It also, Greg, I thought it might interject. It also goes back to the Central Hall property itself in that that property is unique. The building is built, two-thirds of it is built over water, so we really couldn't have a garage situation there. We don't have a site for parking there either, outside the building, so. I don't know if you can use that as a hardship of being that the property is, it's not the same property, but it goes back to the hardship we have on that property with parking. And creating parking that is in line with the quality of the building that we've built there. It's almost an expectation to have covered parking when you, when you have a building of that stature. So most of the other big apartment buildings or condo buildings downtown do have some covered parking. They're not carports. They're more, more often they're garage spaces.
I'm just, I didn't see a question?
Yeah, I think it does. I still have some reservations that we'll talk about, but thank you.
You're welcome. Any other board member have any questions?
I do, Ed. And I don't know who I'm asking it to. It may be to Tom Zanerini as well. If, if the variance, setback variances are granted, what's to prevent the owner from then changing the use on the property to build, say, an apartment building in that entire space with no setbacks?
I don't think I understand the question.
If we grant a variance, so there are no setbacks on the east, west, or north sides, then presumably, the owner of the the property could build out to the edge of that entire lot and could put something other than that?
Got you. What, what you do is if you make a motion, that motion should include that the variance is specific to the project as presented, that they're for carports. And title it that way. Don't just give a blanket setback variance. It's for the specific carports, this specific plan, this application.
So you would, you would label the variance as if granted exclusively for the construction of carports specific to the Central Hall project. Is that correct?
That's correct. I think that would give you enough, give anyone reading the record enough evidence that, that it wasn't just a blanket setback.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other board members have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, could I, could I ask one quick question, please?
Absolutely.
Either for Mr. To, to any of the, our advisors here, the applicants, could could this possibly be done in stages? Is there an option of only half of these carports being built or is there anything, obviously, you try to do as much as you possibly could. Let's go the other way. What is the minimum amount that we could possibly work with? Do we know?
Well, we had looked originally at, we really wanted twelve. One for each residential unit, which, you know, the space is already there. So we feel, I guess, you know, we would love to have ten. Seems to, seems to work. I think if you go back and we look at three D rendering. You know, I think if, and Peter can speak, speak to the massing and form and all that. It just, I don't know that knocking off a couple would make, would would make that much of a difference, I guess. The variances really wouldn't change unless we took them off closer to the north property line and you know, we got a couple symmetrical gables there. I, I don't know. I think we, we I guess not that we would, we probably, you know, obviously, we came, we came forth originally with twelve. We quickly went to ten after Public Works reviewed it. You know, we'd kind of like to, to, to keep as close to the twelve as possible, but I, I understand the concern.
That is your question, Bill? Bill Munser?
I think he's muted.
Oh, okay. Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, can I ask another question?
Sure.
And I, this may also be to Tom Zanerini and the applicants. If the variance is not granted, is each one of those spaces deeded to the condo owner or are they just assigned to the condo owner and owned by the the co-op, you know, the, the condominium association?
They are not deeded to the condo owner. And I think it's, it's, it's fairly complicated. I'm guessing it's gonna be in the condo docs on how they're allotted and how they're controlled, because they're on a different property that's currently owned by the same people. So it's easy when, when everyone, but if they sold, for example, if they sold one or the other, then it would make it more complicated, so it needs to be very clear in the condo documents that they have two spaces allotted. Whether or not they're covered depends a little bit on board here. But they're not deeded. They're, they're, but they're assigned.
Okay, and then presumably, if you have an assigned space, would the, would the condo prohibit them from putting up a portable shelter for a car in that particular space? Or Tom, does the, the town zoning regulations prohibit that?
I'm not familiar with it, no.
They would, they would not be able to make any alterations to what you see before you tonight.
Right, but if they, if, if you were just left with a plain old parking lot and one of the owners wanted to cover it with one of those portable garage, you know, canvas garage type things, would that be permissible under town zoning regulations and/or the condo rules?
Condo docs would not allow that.
They would not.
They would not.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I got a question.
Yes.
But are these things built on, on concrete slabs?
No, they are, they're built on, they're gonna be columns with concrete foundations. The base underneath the parking lot is gonna remain as it, as it was approved previously. Which now you, you have me wondering a little bit.
Crushed stone, that the parking space is.
Fresh stone?
Yeah, if we look at blow this up a little bit.
Which is what it is now, actually.
Yeah, so they're outlined in like a cobblestone. Soldier course of Belgian block or jumbo pavers, and then the, the middle's kind great, or not concrete, crushed stone, like.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I got one more question. When they, when you bring a car, people bring in car, and I know what tenants are like. They'll bring something in, and the next thing you know, it's all jammed around with boxes and pallets and everything else. Are they gonna be able to control that or are they, or just one day it'll just become a mess?
Well, it will be controlled by the condo docs. There's a certain clientele that are gonna be in these residential units at Central Hall. They are single floor and maybe, Peter, they're what, fifteen, sixteen hundred square feet?
They're eighteen hundred square feet.
Okay, eighteen hundred square feet. They're not, they're all two-bedroom plus, maybe? Two-bedroom plus dens. They're, they're not gonna be, they're not gonna tolerate. The condo docs are not gonna tolerate, and the residents aren't gonna tolerate a mess back there. These, these carports are, are partially to make it look a little bit better than, than a kind of a gravel parking lot, so I think it'll actually enhance. It'll enhance the parking lot instead of detract from it. Ultimately, and, and again, they're not gonna, no one's gonna tolerate any kind of debris out there.
But we don't know that.
Well, I can tell you the condo docs won't allow it. Whether or not the town doesn't, does or doesn't, I, I, I couldn't tell you that, but, you know, we're concerned with with the chapter one and what's happening behind their restaurant, so much so that we're, we're paying for the improvements to basically enclose their trash enclosure and fence off a certain amount of their area, so it can't be seen as our clientele, you know, walks from Central Hall down the brick, brick walkway to their cars. With or without, or well.
And remember, these are, these are for sale, these units, and so the condo association will be hiring a management company that will be managing the grounds of the property as well, so it'll be policed.
I have one more question.
Okay, are we all set? If so, we'll call the public chair and it'll close at seven forty-eight. Thank you, Jerome. Okay, let's go for discussion. Scott Rosaro?
Well, I mean, I think it's, you know, from Pearl Street, Water Street, across Route one, east to the bridge. The area there is developed like a city. And, and the Central Hall isn't the only residential area there. There's a number of residences, and we all know problems with parking down there. It's incredible. And along the side streets too. So I think that, given that and understanding how congested it is in that little Tom Manning was asking about a hardship. I think that is a hardship, because even if you don't have carports or car barns or anything of the sort, people that live in those units and other units along in that area are more than likely gonna have vehicles, and those vehicles have to be parked somewhere. And I know there's a tremendous amount of frustration with parking in that area, because there's very little place to park. People, they'll park in front of people, driveways, et cetera. So I think, I think that is a hardship for, not only for the, the property owners and the people that live there, but, but also for the town and the Mystic area that this, that this development is built on. Just Floyd's last question, unless I'm missing something, this is a carport, so all the sides are wide open, correct?
Right.
So given that, I'm not sure, and I understand what Floyd means, because I just got through building a apartment complex up in Groton, and we have thirty-two, but they're car barns. They're, each individual one is totally enclosed, has a door, a door up and down door, and, and people do fill them up with boxes and stuff, but no one's gonna be putting boxes, even if they weren't prohibited. They're not gonna put open boxes in that area with, with stuff in it. It, it would be available for somebody to walk by and grab something. It'd be open to the weather. So I don't think that's gonna be an issue. But I do, I can honestly say that I feel there is a definite hardship for the, the owner, for the tenants, and for the property owner, and for the town at large in terms of parking and trying to make it more amenable and offer offer spaces that, that'll keep these, these cars off the street. All right, I'm shutting up. All right, I'm shutting up.
Okay, Bill Bonsor. Bill?
What's that?
Bill Bonsor. Bill's the producer. I'm going to one that for moment for Floyd. Floyd, your thoughts? He's very strong for not like flies here, right? Floyd, are you still there? Floyd?
I, I'm here, but I didn't hear Bill.
No, Bill doesn't, we lost Phil momentarily.
Yeah.
What are your thoughts, Floyd?
I have no more thoughts. I, on it.
Okay. Bill Bonsor, you back? Bill Bonsor? Uh, Tom Manning?
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yes.
There you are.
Tommy. Sorry, guys, I had to, uh, had to make a, a shift in my equipment here. My, my thinking is, um, those parking spots exist now. So wh- whether we put, allow a carport or don't, the same number of spots are in existence. Is that, is that, I think my understanding is correct.
Yeah, yes.
So then we have the question of, of the hardship. And, and I'm, um, you know, wrapping my head around this. The, um, uh, a, a unique lot, maybe, maybe pre-existing and it, it's typical of the neighborhood to have zero setback. And, um, that, that, that's what I'm turning over in my head, whether that is, um, the right thing to do. Um, I, I'm, I'm struggling with the hardship. So let's move on from there. Who's next?
Tom Manning?
I'm really struggling with the hardship. It's a parking lot and what I heard that if we deny it because we don't find a hardship, it's still going to be a parking lot and they're still going to try to maximize the spaces. And I don't have a problem with that. What my real concern is, is that I'm hearing during the discussion that you have to get a fire truck, a fire apparatus in and having structures surrounding or in the lot doesn't enhance the movement of emergency vehicles, I don't think. I'm not a, an expert in that. But we do know what happened that resulted in a lot being covered by just, you know, with the loss of, uh, that other building that resulted in the building of the, the central block, Central Hall. So I, I'm really, it's a nice to have, you have a very expensive properties and you have a clientele that are used to good things. But I am really having a real difficult time in finding a hardship for this. In that you can do what you want it to do, and that is park cars. And if you have to be, if you have to have somebody on a gate monitoring because of downtown Mystic being so difficult to find parking spaces, then you have to do what you have to do. But I, I just think that this complicates that particular parking lot to a point that I, I, I can't support. And I'm, I'd probably, my, my feeling is unless I'm convinced by somebody else, and I haven't heard anything yet, that I can't find a hardship with what has been presented. They've done a great job. The clients should be very happy. But you're trying to make a soap purse out of a sow's ear. And I, I think it's still a sow's ear in my mind. Anyway, that's all I have to say. I am voting against it.
I share the same concerns as Tom does. You know, it look, it looks great. It would be very nice to have covered parking. But as somebody mentioned earlier, the parking spaces that are there are going to be there. They're going to stay there. So we're not diminishing the number of parking spaces. It would be very nice for the condo owners. But it looks like they're trying to put a five-pound box of sand in a one-pound lot. And I don't see any hardship because all of the lots around there are the same way. They're all built to the lot line, minimum space. They're lucky they didn't have any. In fact, the Harper House lost spaces for use to park there. It's also part of the applicant's own action. The other ones were on a perfect carports. So I can't find a hardship on that. Anybody else have any thoughts? Are we ready to vote? Are we ready to vote?
I am.
We make a, make a motion that we, uh, accept the proposal as presented.
Thank you, Bill. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing on?
Ed, one, one thing.
Stop, 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 stop. You're not part of the conversation.
Okay.
The alternate is do not go into a conversation, conversation. Questioning during the hearing, yes, but not afterwards. Because Floyd came in, so I put Floyd back in.
If, if you, alls I can say is I just remind you that if you make an emotion, you should include provision that it's for the exclusive use of constructing carports in that property.
Bill, do you want to revise?
That, that's a, yeah, that, that's a very good point. Let me rephrase the motion. I make a motion that we accept the proposal as proposed with the understanding that it is only for the, um, construction of the carport as presented.
Tom?
In the plan presented.
I'll second, uh, Bill's motion.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the carports, say a five, saying aye?
Aye.
All those in opposition, say a five, saying nay. Nay?
Nay.
Thank you. Okay, I think Tom Zanarelli, do we, with that decision, do we still have to accept the camera board?
Uh, no, there's no need. You haven't, um, you didn't accept the, granting the construction, so you don't need to grant the camera.
Okay, thank you. All right. That takes care of that. Uh, next on the agenda is for us. Tom, is that ready?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Minutes from June 9th. Somebody care to make a motion?
I move that we accept the minutes from June 9th as written and presented.
I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, I just have one question of Tom Zanarelli. On page two, there was a motion to continue the public hearing to June 23, but in the interim, that was withdrawn. So anybody looking for the minutes of June 23, when we never met, would wonder what happened. How do we handle that?
Uh, no, you don't have to. It handles itself. It was withdrawn, so.
Okay.
It'd be in the today that, to say that it was.
All right, okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any votes? Okay, that's approved. All business?
No all business?
None? Okay, how about no?
Uh, none.
Oh, no, no apps?
Uh, oh, we have one new app, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah, 29 Oxford Court. So there was one new application. It will be in a couple meetings.
Okay.
Probably September.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, that's it. No apps, porter staff?
Uh, no report.
Okay. Just a little housekeeping. I think there might be a new person at the J paper. When she, he or she printed the last two notices, there was no, my name is chair and a section on the bottom. So I think that's somebody you over there.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Motion's adjourned.
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.